We have no action coming out of executive session. So we've now reached that portion of the meeting where we're both welcoming all the participations. I know some people have signed up. When you do approach the microphone, make sure that you speak directly into it so that the livestream picks it up for our YouTube video. Hi, I want to remind you of two minutes. Our board clerk will let you know when you're approaching two minutes. If you have something in writing you haven't really been able to finish, maybe this work clerk should make sure it's disseminated. I do want to remind you that this is not a conversation and we will not entertain comments about individual personnel on positive or negative, so just to let you know. So is there anyone who would like to address the board at this point? Please approach the microphone. Anyone signed up to this meeting?
Hello. Hi. My name is Jessica Price. I am a teacher here in the district at Kingston High School and I'm also a parent of two George Washington Montessori students. And I have written a statement and I won't have to read all of it, but it's basically summarized my perspective of both an educator and a Montessori parent and my child's experience, current experience at GW. So one thing I really just wanted to give unique perspective on is the, a couple of things, but mainly the difference between a highly effective classroom and an effective classroom is what we're scored with in the APPR rubric. And the difference that I've noticed mainly is that students, in a highly effective environment, students are helping each other learn and they teach each other and it becomes a community of respect. So this is something that GW is excellent and this is what Montessori is all about. And I think especially with the Restore Justice implements we've done at KHS this year, it mirrors exactly what Montessori methods of conflict resolution are. So I wanted to give that perspective of somebody who is both an educator and a parent. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board?
My name is Zoe Gunn and I'm the parent of a current George Washington student. I come tonight to hear the results of the recent DTSDE study on GW, which I know will only partially highlight what a treasure and innovation GW is in our city's educational offerings. I've also come to specifically ask the school board to pass a clear and specific memorializing resolution supporting the GW Montessori program with a reaffirmation to keep the program in place and continue to improve upon the current model. I ask for this resolution because the community is aware of Principal Valerie Hanam's retirement in the next few years, that Val has been integral to the success of bringing and implementing the Montessori methodology at GW, and the concern that GW will require an incoming administrator who is a strong Montessori leader. The key benefit of the memorializing resolution will be a commitment from the school board to our community to help alleviate teacher and parent concerns about potentially losing this special program for our children. It also benefits the school board's goals for continuing to innovate and improve education in the city of Kingston. I recognize that we are all volunteers to this cause and I commit to helping the school board in any way to draft this memorializing resolution with the input of teachers, parents, students, and our community at large. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? At this point, anyone else who'd like to address the board? Okay. Hearing no takers. I'll turn the floor over to Dr. Catalino. Oh wait, I have minutes to attend to. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of December 13th, when it's 17.
Seven.
Okay. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none. All those who favor accepting them please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And on to the minutes of December 20th. entertain a motion?
Seven.
Any corrections or additions to the minutes of December 20th? Hearing none. All those who favor please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm standing.
Thank you. All right. And now we'll move along to Superintendent's report. I'll turn the floor over to Dr. Catalino.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I know the superintendent's report has a certain order here, but I think our district happenings and one of our presentations go together, so I don't know if our, I know our tech assistant is out in the hall.
No.
But I bet Meg can do it. So we're going to start with our district happenings, Ms. Zigginfus, and we are going to also then move to a third agenda, which is Ms. Emory DeBella, who will talk a little bit about our attendance initiative.
Okay. Just, hello, everybody. Okay, so tonight's video is part of a district-wide attendance campaign devised by school social worker Emory DeBella and the community. She's going to tell you more about that in a little bit, but for right now, we will ask the community why attendance matters.
Did you know that five to seven million students miss almost a month of school every year? Students who are absent this much have a higher chance of dropping out of high school. The good news is that we can solve this problem. Going to school is my first and most important job. I show up ready to learn. I show up to make my family proud. I show up for my future.
Attendance matters if you want to be a college basketball player.
Attendance matters if you want to be a school principal.
Attendance matters if you want to be a police officer.
Es importante asistir a la escuela si quieres ser periodista.
Attendance matters if you want to be a teacher.
Attendance matters if you want to be a school crossing guard.
Attendance matters if you want to come to the Hodge Center.
Attendance matters if you want to work here at the Hodge Center.
Attendance matters if you want to be a mayor.
Asistir a la escuela es importante si quieres trabajar en un restaurante.
Attendance matter if you want to be a recreation leader.
Attendance matters if you want to be a school nurse.
Attendance matters if you want to lead a school district.
I have the power to make sure my future is bright. Attendance matters.
So as you know, last year we hired a social worker to work with both middle schools around attendance. And this year, Emory DeBella is the social worker that's doing that. And not only is she working with both middle schools, and she'll talk a little bit about the things that she's doing internally and the things that she's doing at school, but this attendance matters initiative is something that, you know, we as a school district and partnering with community partners really kind of decided that we needed to bring awareness to the attendance issues here at school and really start letting parents know how important it is. So some of the things that Emory's going to talk about tonight is around the community partners that we're working with and some of the goals that we have to our campaign. So I want to introduce Ms. Emory DeBella.
Hi, everyone. I'm hoping that you all got your packets. So that was Fashanti. I've known Fashanti since she was about four years old and I can tell you two things that are really important to Fashanti from mother and school. She's had a wonderful experience in the Kingston School District. She loves coming to school. It's not always easy for her, but she always shows up. So she was a good selection to star in this video. I just wanted to give you some information that is already in your packets, but I just wanted to do a little bit of an overview, some of the things that we're already doing in schools and some of the things that we're proposing to do. Before I do that, just a couple of the statistics that are in here I wanted to highlight. So as you can see, at Miller, there's a 93.7% attendance rate. I've been dealing with approximately 40 chronic attendance problems there. That number is going up rapidly because, you know, it's winter and the honeymoon period of being in school is over. Kids want to stay home, we have the holidays, it's harder to get to school, it's harder for all of us to get up in the morning and go out to the cold. Having said that, this is the number that I dealt with from 9/11 until 12/31/17. I saw 19 of the 40 improve and 21 increased their absences or there was no change. Another statistic that I'd like you to just pay a little bit of attention to is that I did a history of each of these students. Thirty-five out of the 40 had chronic attendance problems starting in first grade. So everything that now I am doing and the support staff and the administration is doing in middle school is trying to undo and unravel and sort of drill down into some of those patterns that were developed very early on in schools and to change some of the ways that these kids are thinking about coming to school. The other statistic that is important to take a look at is that six out of the 40 at Miller had school anxiety or social-emotional issues that were serious enough to present them from wanting to come to school. The other 34 just fall into truancy. But truancy could be an intergenerational issue. Truancy could lead to school anxiety. Truancy is a very large umbrella of a lot of other issues going on in the kids' lives. But the good news is that the school anxiety piece, kids don't feel unsafe about going to either of the middle schools because also in Bailey, which is at a 94% rate and there were 42 chronics there, 36 of them started at elementary school. School anxiety issues were six and truancy was 36. So the numbers are basically very similar in both of the buildings. Some of the things that we are doing now and that we were doing as soon as I came in, which, you know, I mean, I've done school social work and attendance for as long as I've been in the school district, but this has been a wonderful opportunity and I do want to thank the school board for creating this position because this has really given me a chance and I think anyone in this position a chance to really kind of dig in and figure out what we can do, not only to just knock on the door and try to get the kids to school, but to find out what's at the root of why they're not going to school. So having said that, what we're doing right now, the current interventions are, I do a school assessment with kids who aren't coming to school, it's a school refusal assessment to determine what are some of the reasons they're not coming. We send home letters to parents. We do CPS reports, we do PIN diversion, we do full petition pins, we do 180 referrals. What we are proposing to do is to add to all of those interventions layers of intervention. And we really want to try to target the parents. Because I have to tell you, there are parents who leave for work at 5:00 in the morning and don't know that their kids are still in bed. At the middle school level, kids are really kind of left in many families on their own to get themselves up and out the door. So one of the things that we'd like to do is to increase awareness through a public relations campaign, frankly, and work with the businesses in our community. So we did form an attendance coalition. The Chamber of Commerce is part of that coalition. The Mayor's Office, Megan Weiss is here from the Mayor's Office, is part of that coalition. Probation, Social Services, and Family at Woodstock. And this coalition met early in the fall and we came up with some plans to sort of move forward this public relations campaign. So one part of it is to work with the businesses. Board Todd from the Chamber of Commerce is going to be sending out about 1,600 letters to businesses in our community stressing the importance of their workers' children going to school. And we are going to ask businesses to place these posters in their lunchrooms and break rooms that "You're here and your child at school" in both English and Spanish. We'll also place these in pediatricians' offices, social service, any place where parents, you know, where they'll go. We'll put them in the schools, we'll place them at the housing authority where, you know, there are definitely some issues with kids that are in school as well. The other initiative that we're working on is to, through this grant that Kenner Gifford in the, the Novo Grant, she was able to encumber a certain amount of money, a small amount for us to use to have attendance mentors part-time at the Rondell and the Hodge Center. And by partnering with the Mayor's Office, we've been able to place two, our SRO officer from Miller, Dan Kenley, in his place at the Rondell Center, and Crystal Bullock, who is a recreation leader for the city of Kingston, is placed at the Everett Hodge Center. And what they are going to do to help increase attendance is if kids are going to these after-school programs but have not been in school throughout the school day, they can still come in, but we're going to do a check on their attendance. And if they weren't in school, we're going to say, okay, you can come, you can play basketball, you can engage in these activities, but before you do that, we have some other activities we want you to do. And we can help with some restorative justice activities, reflection sheets on what they did during the day while they weren't in school. What you can get if you get a high school diploma, what kind of job, yeah, that's all in your packets. What will it take for them to come to school tomorrow? What do they need to change? What are they nervous about going to school? There's a lot of questions that we're going to be talking to them about when the Restore Justice hand us that we'll be working on and we're going to show them this video, which we hopefully also will stream through schools. And then the last, the last part of the initiative is hopefully awards for improving attendance from the Board of Education, from the superintendent, from the Mayor's Office, from the City Council, from business leaders in the community. Because all of the research shows throughout the country that unless you collaborate with the community for improving attendance, you're just operating in this vacuum. So you really have to get all the stakeholders on board because it's to everyone's best interest that children are in school. Employers need their employees at work, but parents can't go to work if they're in probation with the PINs filing. So it's to their best interest. The mayor wants kids in school because he doesn't want them on the streets. We want kids in school because we want them to learn. Parents want kids in school because they have to work. So we have to bring the entire community together. And then the other thing that Kenner's grant is going to offer us is some encumbered funds to purchase things like gas cards for parents to use for kids who miss the bus and can't get to school and they don't have the money for the gas. That is a real problem and that has been a reason that I know of that some kids haven't been able to get to school and just stay home the whole day. Laundry cards. No one wants to go to school in dirty clothes. And unfortunately, we have a very high poverty rate in our community and kids are coming to school in dirty clothes. And we don't have washing and dryers in all the schools, which is also something that would be wonderful to have, but we don't right now. So we can purchase laundry cards for the families. Hanford cards. Kids should not be staying home for anything to do, you know, any, parents should have enough food to feed their kids so that they can get up in the morning and go to school. And Walmart cards in case they need school supplies, you know, clothing, shoes, anything that they would need to go to school. So this is a certain amount that's incumbent for this year. I don't know how long it'll last, but hopefully if the businesses become more involved, we may get some donations. So that's the plan, that's where we're headed, and I'd love to open up to any questions.
Dr. Chovitz, and then Ms. Jordan, the speaker.
Thank you. I very much appreciate the presentation and the work that you're doing. And I really appreciate that it's so comprehensive because I can see how every, you know, different people in the community actually really do an important role. I'm interested in what you've said about onset at elementary level and that seems to be pretty significant, so I'm wondering how and what we're doing to kind of bolster this down to the elementary level so that those kids and parents are getting the support that they need to hopefully mitigate some of this by the time it moves up to the elementary level.
Well, for right now, what we can do is a lot of the kids who attend the Hodge Center and the Rondell Center go to the elementary schools as well, so we can target them through those centers. Beyond that, it's really, you know, social work in the elementary level increasing the ability to go work with the families.
I mean, maybe that's something for us to think about because that's.
You really, you know, honestly, we need an attendance officer for the elementary schools on some level. Attendance council.
Ms. Jordan?
I was thinking about the same thing. I was also wondering how many siblings you have? Are there in these numbers? Do any of these reflect family situations?
Yeah, it tends to be a family pattern if one, I mean, I have a family of three and the kids haven't been to school in well over two months, an entire family. And, you know, now we're at, we're in court at this point.
Right, because when you say elementary, it starts in elementary, kids don't put themselves under less when they're young.
Correct.
Their families have to, so that's why I think it really is important that we figure out what we can do to mitigate that.
I mean, I think part of the issue is that a lot of these parents have had school issues themselves.
I know.
And so they have school avoidance that goes way back. So it's, you know, dealing with that from the get-go, from day one. And a lot of it is, you know, outreach awareness.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I love, I love what you're doing. I'm so proud of our district right now and of you and this initiative. I mean, it's really a district's core professionally and personally for me. And I was going to say what Robyn said, Ms. Chovitz said. And, but I had one question about PINs, the PIN petitions?
Yeah.
Are the districts taking these out or are these parents taking the PIN petitions out?
We are. I find them. Along with CCS.
Right. I just, I was told that districts are no longer allowed to take PINs out themselves and parents have to do it now, so I kept in a meeting, but.
Oh, well, not Kingston.
Right. I'm happy to hear that, so, thank you.
Any questions or comments? Reverend Charles?
I really appreciate what we're doing in this district and the holistic way that we're doing it. It takes the whole community to raise the child and by involving everyone, I think, in the program, it can make it more effective. And so I appreciate the time.
Mr. Shanti?
I'd like to echo those sentiments. I'm glad to see that there's a passion being played to, or being paid to school avoidance and school refusal issues. I think that's really important. And I also think that dealing with the problem at a very early elementary age is a lot easier than waiting until fourth grade, fifth grade, middle school, because then it's, you know, it's pretty hopeless.
Mine would like to think of also, years ago, I used to work on the attendance panel, if you remember. And I especially liked the reflective piece, so I hope you're reflecting all of that to why kids are avoiding school and we'll use it as a resource to maybe begin to address some of the issues. So, thank you very much.
I just want to say, I just want to also thank Megan Zigginfus and Keith Heidecker for the wonderful video and who helped create these posters and really has been a real, an asset to our initiative, so just wanted to give it to them.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Detective Gordon, I know two years ago, the board decided as part of the budget to create that position. I know Ms. DeBella was put into it this year and she has really kind of kicked it into overdrive and made a big difference, so we appreciate the work that she's doing. Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the Superintendent's report is our Principal's report, and I apologize, Dr. Priest. I know you're both your first in the agenda, but you're not. So, Dr. Priest, Graves Elementary School, I think he has a few of his faculty staff with him as well.
Thank you very much, Dr. Catalino, and welcome, everybody. Thank you very much to my staff that came tonight, I really appreciate it. I'm just going to take a few moments and talk a little bit about Robert Graves and show you a few slides and tell you what's going on with Robert Graves this year. These are our SEP goals and throughout this presentation, I'm going to build upon our SEP goals and talk about our goals. These are not the SMART goals because they're really long, they've got a lot of detail on them. These are the pared-down basic goals that are just to give you an idea of what we're looking at. ELA has been a focus at Robert Graves for several years, about three years now. Utilization of data to support both students' academics and social-emotional. Focus on social-emotional throughout the building and increasing community connections. Those are the overview of what we're working on this year. This was one of our ways to focus on the community and my building leadership team came up with having a barbecue for our back-to-school night and having it catered by Texas Roadhouse. The plan was kind of to make it a laid-back evening where parents would come and have something to eat and go to the classroom and talk to teachers and just learn about it in a way that was less structured and more just to know the teachers a little bit and talk about it. We ended up with almost a thousand parents. You see that line? It goes all the way down to the globe, all the way to the stage. So we had to adjust things a little bit, but everybody got to eat, everybody got to talk to the teachers, and it ended up being a really great night. We learned a lot about that, you know, how to do that again. We continue to focus on the social-emotional aspect. TACTD, Restore Justice, PBIS, Peaceful School Bus, and the work of David Levine are all district initiatives that we really have kind of had to jump on before. So these are ways that are fine-tuning how Robert Graves works. And I'm going to explain a little bit more about that. But basically, the relationship is huge in Robert Graves, the relationship between the students and the staff, and that's something that makes us really unique. This is a book that actually administrators are reading and it's very accurate with Robert Graves. And I take it to heart because it's how myself as a principal, how I impact my students, my parents, and my staff. And I look at it as not only my goal to have a positive impact, but how the school has a positive impact on the community. So this book is Integrity, that's named it. It's by Dr. Henry Cloud. And it's an excellent book and really has helped kind of define where, what places we're going with Robert Graves. Restore Justice is something we've been doing for years, really. We use mediation techniques with all students for almost every situation. And suspension isn't something we use frequently. And that's not because there's, students are behaving better. We have a lot of students who probably could be suspended and have been able to suspend for many years, and we have. In the last few years, we've only suspended a couple of students per year. And that's because we've worked hard for those students to make sure we're building a relationship with them and their parents and we're finding ways to keep them in school. PBIS and Peaceful School Bus, this is like I said, PBIS is something we started when I began at Robert Graves and we've fine-tuned it. Peaceful School Bus really has been a very positive thing. At Robert Graves, we have 16 school buses, which is the highest elementary school, just underneath our middle schools. And school buses were our biggest issue at this point. Now, we've cut our discipline in half for the school buses and the bus drivers all know my name well. We have conversations every day, they know a lot of the teachers, they're happy to see us, they talk to kids, they actually develop relationships with kids, and they look forward to the Peaceful School Bus space. Really, Peaceful School Buses has benefited Robert Graves. Diversity. Most people know Robert Graves. We're not highly diverse, but we are diverse academically. Our students, we have students who really struggle. We have 20% special ed on our school. We have 25 or four students. We have a lot of students that need a lot of support. And then conversely, we have very high-performance students. We have students who are in Kelp, we have students who go on to the middle schools and do incredibly well, but it's both ends of the spectrum. So my teachers have to work very hard to differentiate and to reach all students. And we found ways that have been successful to do that. Our PBIS team, this year, we've made some changes to faculty meetings. That's a big change. I communicate my teachers almost entirely through a weekly update. So everything that's going on every week, the next month, throughout the year, is put on an update that I send out every week and it's got all the information on it. So anything that's going on in the building, small stuff that might be up for faculty meeting, is sent out weekly. Our faculty meetings now are used solely for presentations. Each of our grade levels has signed up to present on a different topic. A social worker presents, psychologist presents, I'm presenting on one of them. And it's really changed the faculty meeting schedule. And it also has made, I've made it so that faculty can talk to each other across grade line. So the students who may have had, this is Mendoc last year, they'll talk to the next teacher, they can pass on the knowledge. Mindset is another topic that we've started focusing on the last two years. It's an incredible program that GW. It's an incredible program that Jeannie Stoico, Mrs. Stoico, you gotta stand up for her a minute. I have to call Mrs. Stoico off because she is retiring. And she has been an incredible asset to Robert Graves. And even in her retirement, last year, she is pushing mindset and teaching students and our fourth-grade staff incredibly. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The screen time, that's been a goal of my own. And focusing on teaching parents the impact of screens, video games, and how to really kind of work with their students effectively has been something that I've still continued to work on. This is a mindset example that Mrs. Stoico gave me, that she uses in the classroom. And it really helps students understand how they're thinking and how that impacts their academics. This is a sample of the, of a tool that we created in the classroom that they can refer to at any time and open it up and can read really well. But it compares a fixed mindset to a growth mindset. So if they come to a problem, they can read this tool and figure out a way to react to it. The relationship, as I said, is a critical part of Robert Graves. And it's not something that I've found is well-measured with our APPR. So I've been talking to my building leadership team and David Levine. And I'm incorporating a part of my Domain Four as a discussion with teachers on developing a relationship. How they develop it with students, how they develop it with parents, and how it impacts the classroom. So Domain Four is gonna have a part of it. And this is a sample that I've been working on at the draft. It asks questions about empathy, it asks questions about the relationships in and out of the classroom. It asks questions about how teachers feel they're viewed by their students and by parents. So this is completely, this is part of the APPR that I'm working with my staff to really focus on the relationship. My Tier Two and Tier Three goal, we're focusing on ELA. ELA has not been as strong with Robert Graves' math as for the last couple of years. And it's been a concern of mine, some of our self-populations haven't performed as well. So this year, I specifically took my Floebe TA and dedicated her work to working with Tier Two students for ELA. So she's partnered with the reading teachers, and she spends her time working with Tier Two students that may normally only get specific classroom support from the teacher. So taken another level and provided support for ELA, both reading and writing, for a large number of students. What I do is I meet with my reading team and we discuss these students on a, on this monthly basis and what tier they're at and how we can help support them even more. So I don't have a lot of data, but I used a couple key points that I wanted to show. Everything we've seen from now has been building a relationship, developing the culture of Robert Graves. And how we've accomplished those things are shown in our stats. This is our math. Last year, we saw our math was sixty-six percent, which is considerably higher than others'. We stayed steady, our math is still sixty-one percent for levels three and four. Our Level Four students are thirty-one percent, so only two percent down. That's something we're really proud of, and we're working on ELA to achieve the same. This is our ELA for this year. This is this year's ELA compared to last year. So we're significantly performing better on our ELA than we have been in the past. So that is really what I feel very proud about. And, you know, my staff and my students and the relationships that we've developed are leading to these results. One other thing, this is my tenth year at Robert Graves. So I'm very happy about that. And I have to thank my staff and the support that I received for the success we've had at Robert Graves. Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments?
I'm a little disappointed that you didn't show us a picture of you sleeping on the roof as part of your relationship development. I just wanted to say I loved that.
That was something we did with the parents, the older ones, "Did you really do that?"
It definitely shows your commitment to your students because they're submarine, right?
Yes, yeah.
So, thank you for that.
And you mentioned earlier about complicated population at, at Robert Graves and how there's such diversity. And I just wanted to note that Robert Graves has forty-four percent of its students on the three and reduced percentage. And then even though that's on the low end for our district, that's, it's still a significant proportion of the kids. And so it seems that you're doing very well with the population.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Jordan.
I have been in Robert Graves in the past as a volunteer, and there is a very warm atmosphere that you've created there. And people seem to really care about their students, so I, and I'm hoping that Jeannie will come back and teach my fall.
I'd love to do that.
Okay.
And the next time you sleep on the roof, you need to tell the superintendent to check for our insurance company.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Priest. Okay, next in the superintendent's report, we have our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Tom Clapper. If you can hear us out there.
Well, a lot of things have been happening at High School. We are moving along quite well. The Salzman Building is, South Edition is being put on, the steel is up, the foundation has been poured. That's standing in the, where the breezeway was over to, to MJM. And there's MJM. So, all that's left, in fact, the center part where the snow, the snow is on it, is actually backfilled. All that foundation that you see in that picture is going to stay in place. They drilled holes in it to allow water to drain out and all the proper, we had a GeoTech guy come in and make sure that the soil is going to be impacted directly and that these, all these walls could stay in. They're probably going to be up to grade about a week and a half. Last couple of weeks slowed them down just a little bit. This is the, a bridge going from Maine back to, to Salzman. All new ceilings and lights, they painted it. The floor was existing, and in Phase Two, all the windows get replaced and the heating system gets replaced in Phase Two. But it's a marked improvement over, if you knew those bridges, they did a great job over the break. This is a picture of the old cafeteria. The kitchen is gone, everything is out of there. The brace that you see is new, they had a couple new supporting braces in. Not that the building was structurally bad, it's that there's new codes since that building was built for wind shear and, and snow load. So new steel is being put in. As you can see, it's, it's, there's four or five of them throughout the area. That's a picture from the other side. That, the blue tile on the wall used to be the dish area in the kitchen. And that's the only remnant left in the entire area that would tell you that was a cafeteria. In the audience, there's new classrooms, they're starting to tape the walls in there. That hallway was just turned over, we were using it as a temporary lunchroom. And it was just turned over about a week and a half ago, and they've already got the walls up and they're taking. This is a picture of the Six Hundredths, that's the library. The wall on that side is the new, there's labs for particular studies, and I'm standing out in the middle of the floor of the library. All the piping's done for both the Five and Six Hundredths. They're just waiting for the ceiling to get dropped in so they can finish up the heating system. This is a picture of one of those lab rooms looking back toward the library. And again, it's all, it's all taped and painted, they're cleaning up and they're putting floors down probably within a couple or three weeks. All the bathrooms are done on the second floor, just waiting for wall petitions on this particular bathroom. This is the office suite on, in the Six Hundredths, already taped, painted, doorbuck set. Flooring and ceiling is about all that's left in there. This is the other gang bathroom, that's the ladies' bathroom on the Six Hundredths, completed, totally completed except for cleanup. This is the area where the, all that piping goes to, out through the kitchen area that was just immode over break. These guys are opening up a trench to bring the sewer line out. And this guy is actually cutting the concrete to bring the pipe to them. They cut the concrete square and then they patch it all back in. Electric room's all done on the Six Hundredths, all the electric is running out to all the classrooms, ready to go. The red boxes on the back are the fire, fire alarms, they're all, all ready to go. Couple of days ago, actually yesterday, we had a little power outage downtown Kingston, about ten blocks. And we have a backup generator for, for our school. We did close school early, we were in constant contact with Central Hudson. They weren't sure, they rerouted some systems so that we got power back, but they weren't sure of it. We hooked our generator up and we were about to push the button to let the generator work and Central Hudson's power came back on. Gary had about thirty-nine seconds, I believe was the number, before the IT batteries crashed or whatever happens in his world. So today, we made sure that all of this works. And we started that generator at ten o'clock, and when we flipped it over, Gary didn't even see it. It was, it came, came over so quickly that it didn't even blip his system. And we, we ran it for well over an hour and we had no problems with it. So now it's permanent, that's its permanent home right now. In the summer, we're gonna pull it out and put a pad under it and park it there permanently. But we, we were able to pull it out of the garage, drive it over, fill it up with gas, and hook it up in about an hour and a half. The new, the new procedure will take about fifteen minutes, but he'll have power. That's, that's actually flipping the switch, so. I don't know why I threw that one in there. The cafeteria, that was the big thing over break. The cafeteria is just beautiful, it really is. It came out really nice. Students tend to pick the seating along the windows and the high seats. There's a lot of private area, what was interesting today, people in groups and talking and collaborating, but also they, they had, there was room enough in there where people were sitting by themselves and, and doing studying or whatever they're doing. This, this is not a lunch period, this is the period before lunch, I've some kind of study all I believe. That's the new serving lines, kitchen hubs in there, working in the new kitchen. This is the ribbing cutting, a great bunch of people right there. And this is the people that actually made it happen. They're, that's the kitchen staff from Kingston High School. Ed Corelli is the food director. That kitchen, with every surface in that kitchen was scrubbed. All the food was brought in, pots, pans, all over break, they all came in. They did a great job of cleaning it up, and I really wanted to thank these folks. Because they, they did a terrific job. And this young lady right here is Donna, and she has been the food service director at the high school for about four years. She, she was here when they did it in seventy-nine, when they set up the kitchen in seventy-nine. So, she says she's leaving, but I don't believe it. And why I don't believe it, she asked for a parking sign today. Around the district, some other things are happening, we're still developing the Mahar Project. CH Arch, CS Arch is in full-blown development on the plans. BBL is reviewing them and doing cost analysis. We've had all the consulting engineers through today, another structural engineer came through just to button up a few things. And it's moving along, and we're looking to submit to SED early in February. The capital project for the five-year plan, we are currently working on the CEPR report, which will be given to you in February for approval, and then you become lead agency. We're looking for the vote in March, in May. And if it's, if it's a positive return on the vote, we are looking to submit to SED in July. The, KSQ, the architect on this, on this project, is going to bring the, the design almost to finished stages by the time of the vote, so we're ready to go, it's ready to hit the street. And at the, and at Divine Transition, Bosse's has introduced a few more programs down there, so we've, we're, we cleaned out more space for them. We've been down there doing minor maintenance, fixing faucets, doing bathroom work. We've got the gym petition working, we're, we're moving stuff out of the gym because they need two separate gyms. And that's going along well. That's, that's becoming a very supportive partnership between Bosse's and us. Developing summer projects, we're, we're looking at laptoping at, at chambers. We have a couple oil tanks that we need to remove, nothing's leaking, everything's good. It's just that we are transitioning from dual fuel in a lot of our boiler rooms to single gas, just using gas. And the boil, the oil tanks are obsolete, and we just need to take them out. Sidewalks at Miller and Bailey, and we have a few other things that, they are the main things that we're looking to do this, this summer. Maintaining safe walkways, we've been out, I, I have to commend Judy Falcon. She, she relinquished one of her duties to me. And I'm gonna tell you, getting up at three o'clock in the morning and taking a ride around roads for the last thirty years, she is doing a great job. For twenty years or however long she's been here, because that is one interesting job. And she has developed a great network, we, I'm on the phone with Auntie Ora, New Falls, Sorbetes, every morning before I call Dr. Padalino. We, we get a general consensus of what the roads are, we're talking to the bus, the transportation companies, and it's, and it's, it's well orchestrated. There's a lot of work that goes into that final decision, and, and a lot of that is on Judy organized. And it'd be a nice little paper with all the phone numbers on it, but getting up at three is still not the nicest thing we've ever done. It's all good. And my, and the maintenance staff and the, and the custodial staff has just done a really good job in this real cold weather. We, we've, we've lost two coils in the entire bill, in the entire district. One at Myers in the nurses' room and one at GW. The rest of the heating systems are operating fine, there might be a cold spot here and there. But everything was up and running and the roads were all salted, everything was good. They really worked hard through that little cold storm. We're very happy for this little weather break right now. And that's, that's those two. And we, what else we're doing is we're addressing the issues through, from the board, board inspections. We've replaced the whiteboards at Miller, which was a big issue. Crosby had an issue with faucets in their kindergarten area, we've got that done, we've done the work in their offices. We've been down to JFK, all the buildings, we're working on that list, we're picking, picking things off of that list. And pretty much that's, that's the report, we're working real hard and trying to make everything good for the district.
Mr. Holber?
When we've been inspecting the buildings, the storage has been a problem at all the buildings. Is that something that we need to address? Or will it be coming, you know, when are we gonna reach the tipping point where we have to?
We've, we've been looking at it for a couple of years. And we've actually talked about the warehouse and, and the rent of, of the warehouse and what we could do about that. But, but I, yeah, is it a problem? Yes. Are we dealing with it? Yes. Does the educational process have to come first? Yes. So all the other work has to get done prior to this. The tipping point's coming, but again, we're, we're working on it, we've been, Mr. Olson and I have discussed a lot of different options. And, yeah, we, we, one of the number-one issues through the board walkthrough is with space. And, and what's happened is, storage areas have become areas of learning because there's so many more people in the building, there's, you know, doing specialty, whether it's reading or speech therapy or whatever it is. They, everybody needs a little space to do that education. And, and so, we're working on it.
Just so everyone knows that, that Miss Fox and Dee, or, you know, that Mr. Clapper, Dee and I are four o'clock in the morning in conversation. We're, we're having, we're having growing pains in our relationship. Judy and I had five years of understanding, you know. And I'd say Judy, you know, but she'd say, "No, we can't," and I was kind of having a conversation, but, but Mr. Clapper and I are starting to figure it out.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the superintendent's report is me.
due in December. Again, just through a bunch of different reasons, we did move it warm up, I appreciate that time from Board of Education. Before I go on, I also want, I want to thank Miss Hannah, through GW, I want to thank our students, parents, the staff that participated in the DTSD process. It was a lot of things in the, in the short period, I had a lot of help from, and a great turnout from the parents, great turnout and a lot of assistance from Miss Hannah in scheduling and helping and participating, so I, we do appreciate that. I also want to thank the team that conducted the DTSD process. Dr. Fossello led the team with Ms. Petrie, Mr. Forster, and David Mopar from one of our partners, Arbur. So I want to thank them. And Mrs. Heidecker and Mr. Tomczak, you know, we, I think everyone thanks them when they come up here because they do our presentations and our data and it's all that we need. And I also want to thank Miss Fondo, she is my grammar police and makes her my spell and punctuate properly. So to start, we'll just talk quickly about the history of Montessori, just a really quick history of it. Project was decided upon and it was the idea of Ms. Hannah and Mr. Betzinger, my, my predecessor, back in two thousand seven. And it started in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. It was phased in over a three-year period to become the, the full Montessori program at the, at GW. And, and also to give opportunities for practice, you know, to stage and train the faculty and staff. So if you look down at the bottom of this chart, it tells you how it started out, two thousand eight, two thousand nine was our children's house, we were three and five-year-olds. Two thousand nine, two thousand ten was elementary one was phased in for second, third, and then two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, elementary two was phased in for fourth and fifth grade students. I, I think, having our talus, I say it's important to point out a few things, the change over this period of time between two thousand seven and, and where we are today. Three-year-old students were eliminated from the program in two thousand twelve through budget cutbacks. And there's lack of funding for this age group through our, through the, what we thought would happen through the UPK grant. Also, fifth-grade students no longer part of the GW population, as you all know that in two thousand thirteen, when we redistricted and reconfigured our grades and sent fifth graders to Bailey, well, this district with the, the Bailey Mills School. Purpose of the review, Kingston City School District Board of Education, all of you. Requested the, the review of student outcomes during the tenth year of George Washington, George Washington as a Montessori program. And you all know also, in two thousand twelve, there was a review by Dr. Sean Womsley, an outside consultant who came through and did a review for the report as well. Again, the focus of this is not the educational philosophy of Montessori, it's just, it is students' outcomes, although you can't really separate the two. We're going to be talking about what's going on as far as the Montessori as well. What we looked at, we, you know, we have reams and reams of data and we spent a lot of time making, you know, making sure we looked at the things that we felt were most relative, you know, and really the important things that we wanted to, the things that we could, that would told the story. So we looked at the demographic data, we told, we told, looked at the state's three through, three through four ELA and math assessments, we looked at our local assessments, STAR, we looked at our state assessments, fifth through eight of our GW graduates, we had that longitudinal look of how did our students do when they left our program at GW. We looked at our suspension data and also attendance data district-wide. All this data was compared to our overall district results and then, and similar schools within our district. So I think it's, and also I wanted to point out that in two thousand seventeen, in this school year right now, we have about fifty students at GW who are special permission students. And we have about another thirty-four who have special permission without at GW to other buildings. So I'm gonna start quickly with our data. This is just an overall look at what are our, the three schools that we identify as being like schools in our district. Now, all, all three of these schools, to say that they're like doesn't mean they have the same demographic breakdown. It really, it's, they're, these are our most diverse schools, both economically and culturally in our school districts. So we looked at Chambers Elementary, JFK and George Washington. These are the, the, as far as the subgroups. Also, pointing out that, again, looking at economically, the free and reduced lunch, as you see, George Washington, seventy-three percent, has our highest rate of free and reduced lunch. JFK at seventy-two, has our second highest. And then the next one, kind of sixty-one, Chambers. I put the attendance, it was interesting that Miss Bevell was here, so I did have the attendance there. And that, that's just a reference point for the board, and we were between ninety-three and ninety-five percent attendance at all of our elementary schools. All the data that's important to know is our English as a New Language data, students at George Washington, we have sixty-five students who are currently of English as a New Language students. Chambers, we have seventy-three students, and that's one of the schools that we're, we're finding. We are not using Edson with the fifty-four students as one of the like schools. Edson is a, is a magnet school for our ELL students that we, that we move into that program. Both Chambers and George Washington go there, we don't know if students are students who are, who are part of that student population, that community, so that is their home school. So we looked at assessing data and I also looked down here with the star, you'll see all self-contained students. We know that over at GW, we have about seven self-contained classrooms in there. We removed the data of all self-contained students there. So we're just looking at the regular, the students who are in the classes, not the students who are, you know, self-contained, twelve-one-one, twelve-one-two, eight-one-two classes. We start with our ELA New York State performance levels, and so your averages for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Your first column, you see we have our district average, green is Chambers, our purple is George, George Washington, and our blue is JFK. As you can see, we, we have a dip at George Washington in the ELA performance for the New York State tests. Lower than the state average and lower than the two comparables. We move to the ELL four and we see a little bit of a different story. You know, we see increases in the, in the George Washington in their performance, still a little below the, the comparables and a little below state, but seeing improvement there and seeing also getting more, really, there's not much, there's not a lot of difference in these charts here as far as looking at performance levels of students. Math, again, this is a little bit of a trend that we see, that we see in our third-grade performance, below the state, below the district average and below those comparable schools. You know, this is interesting to turn around looking, math four performance, significant improvements in our, in, at our GW students here. And we see some higher than the, when we look at our two thousand seventeen, higher than our, than our school state average and higher than our, yeah, district average and higher than both of our, of the comparables. And even years before, right up there, right where, you know, comparable with our, close to where our district is and right, right in line with every comparable that we found, that we identified. Looking at our local assessments in two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen STAR, so this is the reading that was, that's done every spring. We see again, slightly lower than, than two comparables, again, one. Well, you look at two, we do two thousand fifteen significantly above district average, then, then a small dip, but we, as we look moving on, math, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen STAR, a little bit lower than our, than the comparables and some, higher than others. We're not seeing huge trends as far as this is concerned, we see some pretty, we see growth, we see consistent performance. This is a very complicated and not very visually pleasing chart, but I'm not gonna leave on the screen for very long, so let you know, I'm gonna break this down into some other charts after, next. So this is assessments compared to, to Kingston City School District, schools from two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, so we looked at our three comparables. And we, what we did was we looked at exposure to, students who had exposure to the GW program over a six-year period of time and how they did moving out through time, it's incentive in the, in the assessments there. We decided to look at the, the New York State grade five ELA in math and the grade seven ELA in math to see where we, how our performance was with those students at that time. And so, as you see here, our fifth-grade ELA assessments, your top bar is our district average, your yellow bar is our John F. Kennedy, and your gray bar is our Chambers Elementary School. So you see what we have, one year, the performance, two years exposure, three, four, five and six years exposure. See here, you know, the lower the exposure to the, to the GW program, the higher the their performance seemed to be at a grade five level. Grade seven math, another, an interesting chart, hard to really, you know, pin down where we were, our Y, but you see one year, close to the, close to the comparables, you see a tremendous jump here at fourth grade in our ELA assessments for our GW students. And again, here, at or above the, above the, the state, or the state, I'm sorry, the district average and above the two comparables when you go to four, five, six. So I mean, that's an interesting chart with the ELA assessments at seventh grade. Looking at math, fifth grade, and again, I continue to say self-contains are not part of this, and it's, that's something that we've come up several times during the review. We look at our fifth grade, here's, here's the exposure through six years, a little below our, our comparables, below the school district average. We look at our seventh grade math, very similar to our, to our ELA. As the exposure from our years four, year five, year six of students who were, who were in the GW program for four, five, six years, when they come to seventh grade in our math and our ELA, we are seeing significant increases in their, in their performance, above the school district average and above their, the two comparables. We also want to look at suspension data, you know, so look at, and really the suspension data is a conversation we want to have about transition. And we know, we talk about transition in every school district, every school in our building, every transition, fourth to fifth grade, eighth to ninth grade, and there's, those are where we really want to focus. So when we're transitioning not only from a fourth grade to a fifth grade, to an elementary model to a middle school model, but we're also focusing on, looking at transferring from a, really, a, a Montessori program to a traditional program from those schools, how does that happen? How does that go? So you look at our, these are in-schools and out-of-school suspensions for our students. This is two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, so last full school year. You see, if we look at our comparables, we have JFK, we have George Washington and we have Chambers. Chambers made up about thirteen percent of all suspensions, JFK nineteen, and George Washington twenty-three. We can do fifteen at Edson, which is a little higher than number one of our comparables, but it's worth mentioning. And then smaller percentages from our other schools. Fifteen, now this is an average of all three years, just looking, and we see similar, what we were saying before, JFK, Chambers and George Washington are our three highest, and those are our comparables. George Washington at about twenty percent. And again, the, the conversation we'll have, if you're talking a little more, it's really about our transition from the transition plan. The DTSD, a diagnostic tool for school and district effectiveness. This is a, the DTSD was developed by New York State, it's a tool and to really evaluate schools. And DTSD process is a system and structure used for all Kingston City School District schools, we've been using it for several years. District receives feedback as part of the continuous improvement model. So DTSD encompasses multiple instruments, interviews, classroom observations, surveys, and the protocol begins with clear definition, you know, of what an effective school is. And the instrument helps us to know, how far are we from being that optimal school with each, with each of our, our school buildings? And that, and that's what the DTSD is used for. One of the things we always like to start off with in the DTSD process is more of the strengths. And, and the strengths that, that were identified by the team at George Washington are a strength, and I don't think I'm, I'm really reporting anything to anyone in this room about it. Parents, students, and staff all reported that they are overwhelmingly happy with the culture, environment and environment at George Washington School. The evidence there is clear that there's a system in place for conflict resolution and promoting positive peer interactions. And students, this, this, I think is something that I'm gonna come back to a few times. Students exhibit a high level of academic and social independence that is not traditional for this developmental age group. When we do, when we look at DTSD, we do it in the form of tenants, as we talked about before, and we go right to tenant two. Tenant one is a district level tenant, tenant two through six are building level tenants that use, tenant one is school and leader practices. What the team came back with after classroom observations and their, and their work at, at GW is, to ensure the high levels of independence and differentiation that they saw, and make sure that those things translate into high levels of student achievement, be looking for the school leaders to devise common work plan templates for teacher use for each level of school to make, to really create some accountability, consistency. And consistency among children's house E1, E2, and also allow for efficient monitoring of all areas and best for, for the building principal. We met with, Dr. Fossello and I met with Miss Hannah this morning and talked about, and she actually has several teachers in her building who are using a, a tool that she will recommend, which is a Montessori specific tool that she's recommended, and we're going to get that into, into the teacher's hands so they can use this. So this recommendation is already, we're already rolling towards making sure that this happens and, and Miss Hannah is moving forward with that, so. Tenant three, curriculum development and support. Team found sufficient data, there was sufficient evidence that the curriculum is aligned with the Common Core learning standards and is being delivered. And they want to ensure, again, the regular, that their learning is regularly and effectively assessed and that the assessment is used to drive the instruction. So again, going back, you see two, three and four have very similar recommendations. School leader, fair system of monitoring the common work plan that's being, that's gonna be implemented to ensure consistency in areas of instruction. And they use student performance data and work plans to identify student achievement levels that are below and above eight grade levels, so to make sure, to make sure that deliver, teachers can deliver the education, the instruction that students need at each grade level. Tenant four, teacher practices and decisions, same recommendation as kind of, really pretty much as tenants two and three. This only brings in teachers, teachers and coaches who will work together to ensure a common work plan, which are being utilized throughout the school at every level, demonstrating student accountability, consistency of all three, you know, children's house E1 and E2. And also allow for the official, official monitoring by school leaders across, across the age of the classroom, again, Miss Hannah's, you know, to consistently and easily, efficiently look and see, are we, you know, doing, are we assessing the learning that's happening in place, the independent learning that we talked about before. Tenant five, student social, emotional development health, again, we talked about in the beginning, this is a strong block, this is one of the things that we really, really was very clear. And I think this, these are the words of, of the team, I just really cut and paste off of, off of their comments and, and didn't really, you know, truncate them all. Welcoming and accepting culture of the schools evident upon entry. Parents, students, they have articulated an overwhelming sense of security and comfort in the school environment. And all parents who participated thought we were passionate about the school and the community that's being developed with Montessori model. So one of the things that we did pull also though out of the culture was something that teachers and parents said that they were concerned about the academic and social transition. So we go back to what I was saying earlier, the transition. And both groups acknowledged that the transition to traditional teaching approach could be challenging, so what do we need to do? We need to do some work around that. And working with Miss Hannah, you know, and, and the support staff at the middle level and middle level coaches will create a social, emotional-based transition support for our fourth grade students at GW. Our role at Central Office, I'll talk about that, but our roles will be to support the building in, in creating that plan. It should address the upcoming changes in academic instruction, delivery methods and classroom destruction. Tenant six, getting a lot of the conversation about parents, there are discussions with parents, viewers found that not all parents understood the academic components of Montessori. So the social, emotional, it was very obvious, parents seemed to know it, but the academic part, and, and Miss Hannah did send, you know, she sent, she sent literature home of parents, and this is a thing, a little more intensive interaction with some of the parents in the district would help them to understand more fully, they are in the, in the school community, would help them to understand more fully really the academic part of the Montessori program. So we're recommending, and the team is recommending, that Miss Hannah incorporate some of that learning into existing events that are already happening at the school. And we've seen it happen to other, in our buildings, where they have a, a community event around, around a certain, you know, maybe it's a Thanksgiving dinner, but also during that time, there's also opportunities for parents who hear from their teachers and, and really learn about what's going on in their class. And so those are things we're gonna put together and assist in, in that. So, summary, through a lot of it very fast, I apologize. With the summary, the district teaching and learning department must assist the building leader in the creation of implementation of DTSD recommendations, that's our job. The district should also consider the allocation of resources needed to reinstate the three-year-old program and evaluate the need more, for more teacher assistance support in that, in that area, if we're only doing that. Consistent with tenant five and the recommendations of Dr. Womsley from the previous review, the district should work to improve the community, district understanding of Montessori. We talked about the, sometimes some of the parents in the community not understanding completely about the, the social, emotional, but not necessarily the academic. We think that throughout the Kingston City School District community, there's not a lot of knowledge of what's going on in Montessori. So they're working together, again, with other, with our other schools, with our other parents, you know, letting people know, what is going on in Montessori? And I put this there in parentheses, special permission in building capacity. You know, we have a progressive, interesting program going on over in George Washington. So not only educate, but promote this for some parents who are looking for something a little different than looking at the traditional models that we're having. So it increases special permissions. Right now, our building capacity, we're running about seventy percent building capacity at George Washington, so we have room for more students. The district should, should consider the allocation of resources for more consistent regular training for our GW and Montessori staff, and intensive for our new staff. Again, one of the things that we talked about in two thousand twelve, not only did we realign and, but we also closed four schools. And closing four schools created a lot of juggling of faculty and staff who had to go different places. You know, to ensure that if teachers do have to come into the GW program for whatever reason, that we have that, that, that intensive training for them before they get in front of the students. District should evaluate self-contained classrooms, how's it GW, we have seven self-contained classrooms over there, we need to reevaluate and see, how, how, how does that operate within the Montessori program? You know, not looking at the, their academic data, but how are we welcoming them into that community? You know, the district in charge of the building leader must create sustainability and succession plans. So if, if, if Montessori is our program, and how are we going to sustain it? How are we gonna make sure the commitments that we make moving forward are going to be sustained and we're gonna have to, you know, continue to work to improve Montessori program? And succession plan, and I think you were one of the speakers who came up, or I would mention, succession plan, yeah. You know, and no program, no, I'm sorry, no person should be bigger than a program. So if we're implementing a program, it's implemented- So if we're implementing a program that's implemented effectively, no person should be, one person being removed from that should not, you know, that house of cards shouldn't fall down. So the succession plan is important, and is that a succession plan where we decide, look for someone who can mentor through a period of time with Ms. Hanam to make sure we have a smooth transition? If that decided we're going to have national search for someone who's already Montessori trained, because there's someone in house who would like to spend time, you know, being the mentor for, with, of Ms. Hanam, so that they can learn the program and get in there and be the next principal. So those are, these are things we really have to start thinking about now. Not trying to push Ms. Hanam into retirement, but, but no one's going to be here forever, and we do need to have a sustainability and succession plan for our program. I think some, other key points that some I did not put in, some I did, but I think it's important to point out also that GW was removed from the school accountability list in 2016 after being on the school accountability list for sixteen years. I think it's important that we know that, you know, the independent work, I said that, and I'm going to continue to say this, of the students at GW that's highlighting DTSDE is what we're striving for, is what we're striving for. We spent our time talking about, you know, talking about our application learning, and those things, that's what's going on, and those are things we're striving for, so we want to see that kind of work, and we want to share that with other buildings, and how is this happening? Restored practices observed by our group are consistent with what we're trying to do here in Kingston City School District, which always sort of practice and all that, change our code of conduct, and quite frankly, knowing, we've all known about the piece rose for many years, there are a couple of steps ahead of us. Transition is key though. We saw with the transition piece, transition is key, so I think one of the things we really need to work together to decide how we're going to create a plan to address that. Is it having a fourth grade summer academy like we have with the kindergarten academies? Is it, you know, what are the things you can do to help beyond the recommendations of the team to help with that transition from fourth grade to fifth grade? And with that, I will open it up to questions from.
Questions, comments from?
I'm just wondering that districts should evaluate the self-contained classroom. That, they're not all George Washington students, right?
Most are not.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the question. So we have seven self-contained classrooms in there that are, and really, after my conversation with Ms. Hanam, that was one of the things that she pointed out, she's like, are they mine? Are they with us? Or are they something else? And I think that's, that's something we need to decide and communicate and see how we're working with that.
Can we speak now, or can we, the next, and then Ms. Jordan?
I hope that this helps the community understand, and have a little sigh of relief that, and, you know, all the wonderful things that were highlighted, I think a lot of us knew existed, and we're happy to see it, you know, presented, and have some relief that, you know, there wasn't anything that we were really digging that deep for, except, you know, the things that you presented. So one highlight that stood out to me is the suspension rates from GW, which I'm wondering if you think that that is, if that is occurring around transition years, if it's endemic to the demographics that GW often fills, or the socioeconomic status, and, you know, whether we can, whether we can parse that out, and how we can, you know.
Yeah, I think it's a deep dive to really get to the root of that, I mean, and Dr. Falcello and Ms. Hanam and I sat this morning together, and this, that, of all the data that we saw, that was the one thing that I saw that surprised me.
Right.
You know, that was, that surprised me the most. But, you know, I won't go into them here because they're all just speculation, but we, we kind of talked about thoughts around that, and Ms. Hanam had some thoughts, Dr. Falcello had some thoughts, I had some thoughts of reasons. Now, none of them have any data or evidence, I'm not going to bring them out, but I think it's something to dive into, right? I think the bottom line is, we know, the one thing we know, is that transition is a difficult for students. So working on that, it can't hurt us to start in that level if we find, if we dig deeper and find our root causes.
It'd be interesting to see what suspensions are, if there's a cluster of when they're occurring, occurring all in the sixth grade, or, you know, and then working with the middle school, to, like you said, to, you know, assist with that transition, but thank you for the presentation.
I have a specific question about suspension.
Well, Ms. Jordan?
No, that's okay. I'll.
The suspension, does the suspension data, is, are the self-contained classrooms excluded from suspension?
Yes, yes. The self-contained classes were excluded from all the data that we looked at.
Okay, Ms. Jordan.
Well, first of all, thank you all who participated in the surveys, and thank you to the team for providing such a comprehensive report. I guess if we're talking about the seven special ed classes there, one of the things that occurs to me is I think we have to look at it throughout the district, because I think that's an issue, you know, for, for many buildings, having kids that aren't necessarily from their neighborhood, and so I think you have to look at that in a broader context so that it's not just GW that we're singling out.
No, and I think one of, one of the, one of the issues that comes up is around capacity, the building capacity, and like I said, I think, right, I'm pushing on the, we need to educate our community about what's going on in Montessori, and see maybe more people want to attend Montessori, because we do, we have thirty percent capacity there, and that's why we have seven special ed, we go down, we go down the street to Edson, we have no capacity, we're at ninety percent, you know, ninety percent capacity, which is really meaningful. So those are some, you know, the questions that we need to work on, but yes, they're looking at how we're, you all know that when we, that when we closed schools and when we consolidated, one of the, one of the things that we saw on paper was happening was we wouldn't have to do that anymore. Well, that didn't, that didn't turn out to be, we saw, you know, we saw our classification rate increase, we saw students in need of those intensive programs as far as self-contained increase, and we weren't, it didn't work out, but it was the math, you know, showed five years ago. But, yeah, it's something to, again, that's why it's on there, just to look at, not only at GW district law.
Okay, Ms. Collins, and then Dr. Chippewa.
I echo my thanks to the committee and everybody who participated, it was well done and enlightening, and I do have just a couple of comments and a question, I think all of us, especially those of us who've worked on the code of conduct and suspension, that was the most striking when I, I saw that, and I agitate down exactly what you said, how do we navigate through that transition of something that perhaps seems so different during the middle school period as well? And I was also struck by one comment in here where it says that these students, when they leave the Montessori program are perhaps the most independent socially and academically, and I wonder if that's not part of the transition? I don't want to use willful, that's a more negative word, but perhaps more self-assured or, you know, I don't know, I think there might be something there. So I'm really glad to see we're going to be working on the transitions, because I think that's perhaps most of our concern. So that leads to my second question, which I'm sure you're not ready to address yet, but I'm wondering about additional costs to the district, and if that's something, I mean, these are all great things to do, but think about the training, replacement of the principal, but where we're at, as far as that goes.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the next step down the road. So again, with the recommendation that we look at and evaluate, you know, what's that, what is that cost? You know, to bring three-year-olds back, you know, to look at teacher systems, we'll look at the training, what are those costs, and then bring those forward to the board, as well as, you know, as I said, deeper dive into this, and see, I mean, that's something they can't go, that's data that I know, Dr. Falcello and myself and Ms. Hanam said, that's not, we can't just leave that there, we need to know what that's about.
Thank you.
So also, thank you for this report that we've been talking about for a long time, and I appreciate the effort, but one, two, and three, from the staff, and also from the community that participated. I do want to put in a little bit of a plug for more local data, at the risk of being too data overload, I was really hoping to see like reading levels and kind of some of our more local assessments instead of just the STAR and the state test, because I'm not sure that those are totally representative of anyone, not just GW, so maybe in the future we can think about using some of those more, I mean, I think of them as more nuanced and more true to who we are kind of assessments than kind of state tests, but I think that's another one for another day. Kind of wanted, I was thinking a little bit about what Ms. Collins had about extra cost, and I know that we have talked a lot at the board table about the difference between equality and equity, and not everybody gets the same thing, and not, but if we really want to work with our schools to make sure that everybody's getting what they need, that doesn't necessarily mean that everyone, that all schools will get the same. And so when you do this analysis of what three-year-old program to cost and what the extra training to cost, I hope that we would really take into account kind of what the need is that we're looking to fill in GW, and then think about that, I mean, we all have to think about that and balance that, really, what the need is across the whole district.
And talking about equity as far as resources, we've been talking about that for several years, and even so much, we had, you know, two years, I think, I put out a report to show what our spending was for building, you know, with every, with all the dollars we put, all things put in. You know, on top of that, under SM now, we, partly, part of the accountability is making sure that we have equitable distribution of our resources, so they've been lucky enough to give us a little formula and worksheet that Mr. Verge worked on a couple of weeks ago, so, but actually, you know, it's, you know, it's one of those things, it's a curse but a blessing, because it does help us to see where we are and what we need to do to get to that equability.
It's a little bit of a backing, but then to go along with that, if we're going to invest in, in, in training, in teacher training that way, then we also need a way to make sure that those teachers who are trained actually get to stay where they are, and so I hope that there's a way that we can work on that also.
Absolutely, and that's, and you heard me say, many times, that is, that's one of the issues that concerns me.
I enjoy everyone else, and I think they've been doing a job well done, I think it's thorough, and it gives us then a real sense of understanding what this program means to our district, and what things need to be done to improve the program. I'm especially happy about the idea of looking at the, bringing the third graders back in, because we all know that the earlier we start with kids, the better. And, and again, I think we have to, of course, look at how much this district costs in order to enhance it, but I do think that the idea of equity rather than equality is what we're shooting for, so we have to look at all that.
Mr. Shonosie.
Again, I'd like to thank everybody that participated, the parents and the parents and the community for participating as well. Spent a lot of time last night looking at the draft that you provided us yesterday, and there were some slides in the draft that you don't have here. And, but a few of those were really telling to me, very interesting data, can I talk about those?
Yeah.
Well, specifically the ones that showed the seventh and eighth grade performance, I think it was slides, maybe seventeen and nineteen of the draft.
Was it this?
I guess it was, it was maybe, I'm not.
Was it eighth grade math?
Well, eighth grade math, is there an eighth grade math there?
No.
There was.
There's an seventh grade math.
There was an eighth grade math. Anyway, also, this is the number of years, but, so the interesting thing here is that as students get to seventh and eighth grade, and there was an eighth grade slide, and it was even higher, the, the students who had been in sixth grade, or six years at GW, in eighth grade, in the eighth grade math were significantly higher, they were even, much, they were significantly higher to me than even the district average. And there was sort, there seemed to be a steady progression of improvement in scores, in assessment scores for GW students in middle school, while there was a decline in other assessments, in assessments for other students from sixth to eighth grade, so, and I think, I think we've known that, that there's been a decline in, a decline in, in assessment scores for middle, middle school students as they go through, I mean, but for the GW students, there was an increase, and I wonder if there's any thesis about why that is.
And is any of the graphs that aren't there, this data though, does speak to it? Yeah, it's this one. The, yeah, and one of the things with the eighth grade, one of the reasons we chose the eighth grade was not going to be one of the, you know, fifth and seventh, eighth grade, it took the blazer, you know. The eighth grade is a clean data, because when they get, when students get to eighth grade, advanced students don't take the New York City assessment necessarily, advanced students take, you know, take high school math, they take the algebra, so it pulls, so, so to show that, that doesn't give us the true, so if you have fifty students, twenty-five students who are GW students who are in eighth grade, and they get moved into algebra, they're pulled out, which would then lower that, you know, would lower that average score. So, and the same for any of the buildings, so that's not, it's not clean when you look at it as far as the state, you know, looking at the state scores.
But look at the, look at the math seven, the bottom column, two.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's, the district average is one point eight nine. So, and I think, I think it was the same for ELA seven, I'm not sure, it doesn't show it, but it's, it seems to me a, I would want to know why that is, I would like some hypothesis about what that is showing, because it seems to me it's showing, well, I don't know, I can hypothesize, are these students are coming in to middle school more independent? I mean, that's one of the observations, that they're coming in independent and more self than others, than other students their age. Is that independence and, and, and carrying through and improving their perform, their academic performance as they get older?
I mean, that's, that's a hypothesis, that could be, I mean, I'm not going to, without any, without diving deeply into it, I'm not going to make any speculations, I think there's a, you know, but that's, kind of when we look at the suspensions, you know, it's the whole thing, you know, if there's a correlation there, you know, they came from GW, there's the higher layer suspension, but is that telling us why they're being suspended, because they came from GW? We don't know, we got to dive in there. So that, I, there's several things that we found in the data that, again, I think Dr. Falcello and I, and we looked at and thinking, this, we can't just leave that there, we need to know more about that. These, the, the, the math changes, that was just, from third to fourth grade, and even when they get to the seventh, there's a, there's an interesting findings that I think we would like to know why. Is it great teaching? Is it a, is accumulation of knowledge that that is like, takes hold because of the independence? We don't know, but we're a big looking.
Just in response to that, Jim, the Montessori math program is one of the richest math programs that I've ever seen, and I think that because it's so hands-on young, that I think that maybe when the kids are faced with more complicated abstract things, they have that basis to go back to, that's just one thing. The other thing is that the kids then are more practiced on these state tests, and so you can't, you know, that has something to do with it too, maybe, I'm just, I've just been responsible for your thinking.
And only you look the way we work on math with the Common Core and the way Montessori works on math.
They have to get used to those, because that's part of the transition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, um, before we get on to the consent agenda, since this sparks a new super plan of report, we have several students here from Coleman. We're moving on to another portion of the meeting, if we need to leave, we can actually take it over to the panel, I guess, and then we sign our registration forms.
I'm enjoying this.
So please. We let you pick your ideas, tell them about seven o'clock, I may be here soon.
All right. All right. We're going to return to the agenda now, so thank you very much, I'm going to have to take a photo on that, but I appreciate it. And is there any resolution that any of the trustees have pulled from the consent agenda?
E forty-nine.
All right, we're going to return to the agenda now. So thank you very much, I'm going to actually take over on that. Thank you very much. And is there any resolution that any of the trustees have pulled from the consent agenda?
B forty-nine.
Anyone else? Anybody else? Okay, all in team motion to accept the consent agenda, minus B forty-nine. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? And now B forty-nine, all in team motion, B forty-nine.
Second.
And discussion. Mr. Shonasey?
B forty-nine is, concerns the sale of the Sione building. And I know this is a topic that has been at the forefront of the district consideration for several years. And so, I think this is a, this is a resolution that deserves some, some focus, sunlight, and also an explanation of what was, what went into the development of the resolution.
And Mr. Shonasey, I should let you know that I asked them to be prepared to answer that question while the documentation of it we have.
So essentially, when the bids were opened in July, the highest bid for Sione was from, was it sixty-one Brown Street LLC? For four point five three million dollars?
Three five.
Four point two five.
Mr. Rolson?
Four point two five three.
Four point two three five three. And, and since then, the principals offered that price have done a lot of due diligence and found areas that...
Did you allow them to take over and just explain?
Yeah, but, yeah.
All right. You're doing this secret, yeah, go ahead.
Um, in due, their, their due diligence, I think they responded some issues that would cost the buyer, you know, money to remediate, some environmental issues as well as some structural issues. In speaking with them and working through, bringing our experts to the table and their experts to the table to come to an agreement of what we think that, we thought the value of those issues were. We did come to an agreement to a new purchase price, which is the purchase price of the autonomy agenda plan.
And I, I just want to say that is a typical part of any negotiation for real estate. So it's not, you know, they wish that they didn't have to mediate what they did, but it's not unreasonable.
Right, and so the purchase price is three point, we're, we're going to, without this resolution, the purchase price will be three point four seven two million dollars. Still significantly higher, almost double the next highest bid that we received from them. So, and the buyer is willing to pay that, so.
Do you have any good questions?
And still allowing us to remain as we need and those terms are still the same, which was also important to me.
All other terms that were agreed at times are remaining the same. We'll be here for, you know, for twenty-four months from closing, closing, with that, you know, with that thing.
And so, this is my question, when is the closing date?
Uh, that's as soon as we get done with this resolution. And I know the purchaser's attorney is here, so I'm sure he'll be ready to call tomorrow instead of losing. They're very anxious to close.
Any further questions? Okay, all those in favor of B forty-nine, please signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you very much.
We have that D twenty-eight, we're as the ER Crosby Elementary School, recipient of a generous donation raised by parents and the community during the 2016 Hanner Help Schools Program, an amount of one thousand dollars. And we have B twenty-nine, whereas the Kingsley School District Athletic Department is a recipient of a generous donation of a hundred and sixty T-shirts from End Zone Athletics to be distributed to the student athletes.
Excellent.
Yeah.
That's it, okay, excellent. Which brings us to Board of Education committee reports, and Mr. Michael, would be stating commission.
The committee met last month, December fourteen, covering interest in notes, the fact that the committee accepted the two thousand and fifteen review, the financial statements from the CPA company, Patterson Kowski, Harwin Boche. And also, at our meeting, we elected a new commissioner for the, this coming year. We will be having a shareholder from Mr. Kilduffa from the senior kids on the proximity of the area. Now, what's her name? Tomorrow morning, we have a meeting, the committee again tomorrow morning.
The facilities committee met on December twentieth, and we concluded all building inspections. We have a letter report on that. We will have language for referendum for the May ballot for capital fund to begin to address the huge projects that were identified in the five-year capital evaluation of the district. And many of them involve paving, which is very expensive, and window holes. Because most of our buildings date back to the sixties and they are still have the original single pane windows. So we began to address replacing windows that are broken and with ones that are more energy efficient as well. So, we will have that language for you in February, the next meeting of the facilities committees, January eighth. And we will begin to clean out also that, the hard project. Anybody have a facility for a language? Which brings us to old business, is there any old business any trustee would like to raise? Any old business, yes?
My new athletic director went into solving a problem with the acid bomb thing that we can't do.
No.
Just a reminder.
Thank you.
And I think this might be old business, but when we went to the high school to, it was cut, ribbon cutting, I had several requests for turkey, kids and gravy to be restored. I thought you wrote that down. I need to prove all since, all, all of these things, they, and I can't believe it, but being revealed to people. So I don't know how to say it.
There's got to be a reason Ed took that off the menu, I don't know why.
It's comfortfully, I guess, it's hard to figure it out. So I said I would do my best to pursue it. I'm putting the request, I don't know. I think it's undeniable.
Any other old business? New business? Elster County. Oh, yes, the Elster County School Board Association meeting, Shyla, back in like a count by the fifteenth, which is coming up quickly next week. So I know some of you have been here already. I would be happy to go if someone wants to.
I'll go.
You dragged me, okay, so I'll go to, so I won't go.
I, I already go.
Okay, excellent. Tyler, when I, we have a, I answered you today, we have another meeting schedule, which we're going to try to do. Parents meeting, and then...
And I haven't looked at the Elster County School Boards Association agenda, I know the importance of that meeting, so I'll talk if you see it, and please to see if there's another opportunity.
Okay, now please let Shyla know. On the line fifteen. Any other new business? Jim? Mr. Shonasey?
So I was contacted a few days ago by a parent who was concerned that, he wasn't, he had something that he was supposed to sign for his child in middle school, results of an end of, end of unit assessment. And he wasn't able to get a copy of the assessment test. I don't know how, anyway, there's a, there's a policy fifty by fifty, student privacy. And the second part of that is on instructional materials. And it says a parent's guardian shall be granted upon request reasonable access and right to understand instructional materials. The last sentence in that paragraph does not include academic tests or academic assessments. So he was told that it was against this, the policy, and apparently was right. But this policy was adopted in two thousand and five and then amended in two thousand and eight. I don't, I don't, I, I wasn't on the board in two thousand and five, I believe that Mr. Bowles, let's see, was probably still in charge of the, possibly even then. But, you know, and I don't remember the amendment, I think the amendment in two thousand and eight that's been with releasing birth dates or something like that, it never included with releasing assessments or, or the parents' rights to see assessments. But I think that it needs to be reviewed, and I'd like to see it reviewed in the policy committee. Because I, it's, you know, it doesn't make sense to me that if a parent is supposed to make a positive affirmation that they reviewed something with their child, but they don't see the underlying document. What, what are they going to do? Going to say, I, I reviewed that my child misquestioned what? I mean, that's not, why do they have to sign and return that? It just doesn't make a lot of sense.
All the agenda possible? Okay. Any other new business? Board member announcements?
Happy new year. Happy new year.
Anyone else, board member announcements?
So I, I wasn't sure I wanted to say this, but, so on Saturday afternoon, I was at Quick Check on all the happening. And there was a woman walking by on the sidewalk, and she was not well dressed, not adequately dressed for ten degrees or wherever it was, and she was very, she looked like she was very much in distress. And I, and I had gotten, I think a lot of you know Nora Strana, who had posted a few days ago about emergency, code blue, emergency weather alerts. So I called the Kingston Police Department and asked and told them about this woman. And when I, when I told the dispatcher where I was, she said, is this about the old lady? And I said, yes. And there was a, within a minute, there was two police cars that responded. And so, you know, there's the saying, if you see something, say something. You know, that doesn't have to do just with terrorists or crimes being committed. It has to do with people or animals or situations that are, that like, where someone is in, is in grave danger of distress. And so, and I think that ought to be impressed upon our students as part of the social emotional learning that, you know, they should have a responsibility, take upon themselves a responsibility. And the other thing was that, on my cell phone, I have, I have in one of my quick lists the Kingston City Police Department. And I think it's a good idea for everyone to have their local police department readily accessible on their cell phone. And I think that that should be, that, that students should be reminded of that. They should have the Kingston Police Department, or the Austin Police Department, or the County Sheriff, or whomever it is, can respond to a situation where they, where they see that someone needs help that they can't provide.
Just one announcement. Mr. Shonasey? And one other, I don't know if you want to take over for the friend of the distinguished friend of education.
Okay.
Okay, because you're listed as...
Every year, the School Boards Association awards or asks its district to nominate someone who kind of embodies the spirit of education in their district, and so it's that kind of year. So we need to think of someone that we would like to award a friend of education, also the School Boards Association Friend of Education Award to for this year.
Okay, and we will take that up again at our next meeting?
I have somebody to run.
Yourself.
Okay, any, any other board announcements? All right, we've reached a second opportunity for public participation. If there's someone who would like to address the board, please push microphone, we have two minutes. Once again, it's not a conversation. And we do not take any comments about personnel, negative or positive. We do have a speaker, if you can hold, she's, just one moment.
I just wanted to know about, maybe I can just say it from here, the executive decision about, it was a, I was supposed to be addressed today about termination, or...
I can't hear you. Her name's Linda Dougherty, she understood that her personnel position would be addressed at this meeting. It was in the consent agenda.
Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you. So, you know, have you done it yet?
It's not.
Sorry?
We've already voted.
So you're going to...
It's not appropriate for you to discuss it, if you want to talk to somebody.
Oh, I, you don't want to know, okay.
But that was part of the consent agenda. How does one know that that's on the consent agenda? The consent agenda is online from several days before the meeting, right up until the meeting. It's, it's been available online, it's been up online. And there are also agendas available through the board clerk at the meetings. Is it, your position should not have the option to discuss that tonight?
We don't discuss personnel.
We don't discuss personnel, no, we don't discuss personnel. In open meeting, we do not.
With whom can that be discussed?
With whom can she discuss it?
Oh, she can discuss it with me, sure, the deputy superintendent.
But make an appointment, yeah, not, not in the public forum.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Anybody else who wants to address the board?
I mean, this is one of ours. There were exciting things at the meeting tonight. Didn't want, I, I think it's great that we have the initiative of attendance matters. But I would like to echo too, what was raised, I think that we need to drill down to the elementary level. I know years ago, there was another study done, and at that point, they saw that the random attendance records that they had selected, in that case too, they saw that the student attendance issues began in elementary school. So I think that's an important issue to continue to raise. I thought Dr. Faris's presentation was outstanding, and like everyone, I appreciated the superintendent's report and everyone who contributed to it on Montessori. With all that excitement, I did want to say something about policy, something that endeared my heart. Fifty-five hundred, or fifty-five five zeros there that, that was brought up, should probably return to the policy committee. But as I remember the discussion many years ago, there was a concern about the releasing of assessments to persons outside of the classroom, as Dr. Calabria reminded of that. So I don't know how that can be reworded, or, or if there can be some kind of a position taken or a parent can be assessed or all given, but I think, I think that was the concern and that was why that was specifically stated in that policy. That probably doesn't help any, but going forward, we can re-discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Anyone else would like to address the board? Superintendent Takers, honor team, Mr. Jaren? Superintendent Takers, all entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alan Grecia.
Mr. Michael.